City of Beelton's Planning Commission for Thursday, October 21st. Will Commissioner Mercado lead us in the pledge? Roll call, please.
Here.
Commissioner Mercado.
Here.
Commissioner Sarkia.
Here.
Vice Chair Blockdike.
Here.
Chair Hamill. Here. Any reordering of the agenda? No. Presentations, none. Approval of minutes for the regular planning commission dated October 7th. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular planning commission meeting of October 7th, 2021.
I'll second.
Those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will abstain as I was absent, but I want to commend those that were here and commend Vice Chair Blockdike for leading a complex meeting. Public comments, so we have a new procedure this time around. Posting, if any, if there's anyone watching on City TV that wants to make a public comment not related to anything on the agenda. There are phone numbers posted. So we will give everyone a few, a minute or two to call in if they would like.
Paul Rose.
Okay. We will move along. Did I hear something? Okay. Okay. Consent calendar, none. Continued public hearings, none. New public hearings, none. Other business. Item number two, preliminary review of the 518 mixed-use project, 518 Avenue of Flags. Accessor parcel number 137-170-006. And is Ms. Tucker on Zoom with us?
I am on Zoom with you. And I will be sharing my screen to make the PowerPoint presentation. So if we are ready.
Yes. We are, thank you, yes.
All right, then I will go, go ahead and. Okay, so. You need to let me know if you are seeing the full screen version of, well, maybe.
Can we turn her mic up a little bit?
Okay, there we go.
Yes, Irma, I can see it on my Zoom screen.
Okay.
Possible for you to turn your mic up or speak closer to the mic?
Well, this is his best, I've never had trouble with this mic, so. Let me see, hang on, let me see if I can. Adjust the audio settings on it. My input volume, hang on, I can turn this up a little bit. Okay, is that any better now?
Yes, that's better.
Yes.
Great. So. Good to know. Yeah, okay. Alrighty, so. The project before you tonight is the 518, as it's being called for now. It's a mixed-use project at Avenue, at 518 Avenue of Flags. This is the Planning Commission's preliminary review meeting to look at the formal application that has been submitted and to provide comments. Okay. There we go. And so the owner of this property is still Cameron Amiri. Actually, an LLC. And the applicant is Brandon Mann of Mann-Beyr LLC. They are. They have an agreement with Mr. Amiri to enable them to go forward and seek new entitlements on this property, which was previously approved for a project by, on behalf of Mr. Amiri. They are not moving forward with that, and so. The applicant currently is proceeding with a new application and permit. And. If, if, once and if this gets approved, a condition of approval would be that the prior approval gets terminated, so. So we're just going through the process for that. And so this is for a potential new development, as I mentioned. It's also a mixed-use, a commercial and residential project. The Avenue of Flags specific plan area is on the northeast corner of Avenue of Flags and Second Street. Right there, we can see the vicinity map, the adjacent uses. To the west is Avenue of Flags. To the north is the San Marcos Motel. To the east are. Aerial is from a little while ago, it's before the Avenue Heights apartments were built, but where that. Right here, where all these trees are located, is now the Avenue Heights Apartments. And this is the, there's some existing residential motels, residential apartment units, a former motel actually to the south, but this location. And I'm hoping you can see my cursor as well pointing to this. Okay, so this is where the Creekside project is located, which has received entitlements for it. It's also a mixed-use project, and Brandon Mann is also the applicant for that. I think we just went through this, oh, so this, this actually shows the. The Avenue Heights Apartments adjacent here on this, this view. As we can see here on the left, the entire site is within the hundred-year flood zone boundary. Grading or floodproofing of the buildings will be required to comply with the floodplain ordinance. And I believe it is the latter that the applicant is proposing to go with in terms of floodplaining, I mean floodproofing the buildings. The entire site is vacant currently, it's a 1.22 acre site. As I mentioned, it's in the Avenue of Flags specific area, it's one of the four anchor types. Anchor sites for the downtown, main downtown street corner is a town plaza corner courtyard. And that is the type of building that's being proposed there. The underlying zoning is CR, general commercial. Although the setbacks enassing for the building will be per the Form-based code in the specific plan. And it is within the District 3, which is the civic junction and town plaza district of the specific plan and its opportunity site. Number seven. And the town plaza corners and the town plaza is envisioned right here. The intersection of Second Street and Avenue of Flags. So the applicant's project vision is to create a commercial and residential community with a signature corner courtyard building that mirrors the approved Creekside Village project on the south corner. They'll be providing a commercial retail space presence on the Avenue of Flags of approximately 5,500 square feet. And will be creating new multifamily homes with open space amenities, 48 apartment units are proposed. They're generally consistent with the Avenue of Flags specific plan, the Art Deco design style and complementary to the neighborhood, neighboring developments. The overview of the project, there's two buildings. The building number one fronts on Avenue of Flags and is oriented towards a walkable and shoppable main street. The ground floor consists of 5,500 square feet of at-grade general commercial space, including a 560-square-foot town plaza corner courtyard. That's the net square footage of what's included onsite, but the town plaza corner actually expands into the sidewalk area as well, which is part of the vision for the specific plan. The first, second, and third floors above the commercial space are residential, and there's 16 dwelling units within this building. There is also roof decks, as well as a pedestrian bridge that connects above ground at all residential levels to building number two. So building number two. On the ground floor, there are two entrance lobbies, one with an elevator and both with interior stairs. Laundry room and mail rooms included. There's at-grade covered parking garage, which is underneath the residential floors and actually serves as the foundation for the residential floors. And the parking garage provides single car, as well as tandem parking for two cars for the residents. There are three floors of multifamily units, 35, 32 units total on this building, so together, there's 48 units. And within building two, there's also common areas consisting of a central courtyard and outdoor living spaces with shared barbecues, seating areas. It's an indoor gym, yoga lounge areas, in separate space for banquet rooms. There's roof decks with outdoor furniture and, again, outdoor living areas are envisioned in here. And as mentioned, there's pedestrian bridges connecting to building number one. Just some quick stats on the site. The ground floor area, just the footprint of the, both buildings combined, is 20,800 square feet approximately. It's about 40% of the project site. And there's no maximum lot coverage in the underlying CR zone and plus, this is part of the specific plan, which we're really going with the Form-based code, which encourages. You know, lot coverage, that's what not, it provides for the lot coverage that we are, we're seeing on this project. The remaining site area of approximately 32,200 square feet, 60% of the site is utilized by landscaping, hardscape, parking, and circulation. So development permits being requested include a final development plan and a development agreement. And this is for participation in the Development Opportunity Reserve, or the OR program for short, which is the program that was set up in the specific plan to provide development incentives in return for public benefits. This is the second project that would be participating in the DOR. The first project was the Creekside Village. Immediately to the south. Potential exceptions being considered for the project include, for the DOR. They're requiring, they're requesting an exception for density, and there may be potential others to be included in this. So again. For the DOR, or potentially as development plan modifications, we'd be looking at height, height setback, possibly for the tandem, tandem parking garages, and also potentially for the landscape area. Other permits may be needed as well. At this point, it has not been identified if any takeout food services being proposed, or if it will eventually be part of the project, then a CUP may be required. Other permits, a signed permit will definitely be required, as there's no indication that this is being requested as part of this development permit. Solar permits for insulation of the solar panels, and of course, others may be determined as we move through the application process and review. The prior reviews and approvals on the site. So conceptual reviews were conducted of this particular project by the Planning Commission on July 15th and on, by the City Council on August 12th. And some of the comments that were addressed as part of this, this formal submittal. The renderings are showing side-by-side depictions of both Creekside Village and the proposed project along Avenue of Flags, which is something that the Planning Commission had requested, so they provided some very nice street perspectives and that side-by-side comparison, as well as showing the neighboring areas and their aerial views. They've also clarified the sidewalk width of the, along Avenue of Flags to be 12 feet, which allows for walkability and outdoor seating. And clarified the location of the ADA accessible parking garages and units. So as I mentioned before, there's a prior approval on this project and existing entitlement on behalf of Cameron Amiri, and it would be terminated after the proposed new project is approved. So here is a, here's the site plan of the ground floor. Again, building number one is right here, ground floor commercial space. This is the parking area and access entrance, outdoor parking for the commercial spaces. There's outdoor parking to the north, some of these are covered by carports. I understand that the covered parking would be for the residents. This is building number two. Garage is being provided on the ground floor. This is the interior courtyard and entry, well, the entry is right here. Entry lobby and elevation, elevator. Second point of access along Second Street and additional parking right here. And some of which is uncovered, some of which has carports right here, intended for the residents, again. Adjacent here are the Avenue Heights Apartments. And adjacent here is San Marcos Hotel. So just a little bit more detail on the ground floor plans. Only pointing out that the tandem garages, there are not only tandem garages, but there are single car, car garages. ADA accessible garages provided at the ground level. And there will be a comment later, which I would just like to. Plant a marker in your brain to come back to this visual, and we can if we need to, but we, we would like to clarify access to the. Residential units from the parking areas, both exterior and interior. Because right now, it appears that they would need to walk out to the street to get to their, enter their units from the parking garages and, and the exterior parking, so. But we'll come back to access a little later in the presentation. This is the residential floor, residential plan for the first floor plans. And there's a one-bedroom unit here on the first floor, tucked into what would be a mezzanine level, really, of the commercial area, and first floor residences right here. There's a common space right here, looks to be a banquet room. And. Oh, below that, actually, I didn't point out, but I believe there's a, the lounge area and the gym and the yoga area down below that, at the ground level. So I'll just go through these a little bit quicker, and we can come back if there's any questions, so this is the second floor plans. Again, there's a common room here. Pedestrian circulation here, yeah, what appears to be some exterior walkways and some potentially covered walkways. And a pedestrian bridge leading to building number one. Similar layout for third floor plans. And residential bridge here. These are the units that are above the commercial, one, second, and third floor are similar, and this location has exterior stairs leading up to the residential units. And. The stairways on building two, these are two sets of interior stairways. And elevator right there. Okay. So, building heights. For the underlying CR zone, 35 feet maximum is allowed, with up to 50 feet for architectural features such as towers, flags, and the like. Exceptions to this height limit are potentially allowed via either a development plan modification, which I believe was the case for the Creekside project. Or via. The Avenue of Flags specific plan, which would allow up to 50 feet via participation in the DOR program. So the. Proposed height for the buildings. It's 41 feet to the top of Parapet and 46 feet to the top of Crown. And I have these in parentheses because clarification will be needed as to exactly where those heights are being measured from and what those terms mean. So. The first bullet point here under clarification is that we're asking the applicant to verify, show, and clearly label all the building heights and just clarify the terms that they're using so that there's consistency between the terms in the Beelton Municipal Code. Some of the callouts on the elevations do not line up with the buildings, so this was a comment, actually, the, the building department also. So this was a comment actually that the building department also made. So we'll need further clarification of that, as well as showing the natural grade of the site so that we can calculate building height from the average natural grade. I'm sorry, from the natural grade of the site. So these are the elevations. And this is the west elevation, the top one, which is from the Avenue Flags. And low elevation is the south elevation that faces Second Street and also faces the Creekside Village mixed use project to the south. And I would just like to point out that some of these elevation markers, it's kind of hard to see what they're actually pointing to. So we would just like to see some clarification on that. And this also becomes a little bit important, well, important a little bit later on when we talk about the building height setback requirement, which is part of the Avenue Flags specific plan. So we'll need to come back to the elevations to see where that setback has and has not been provided. And it really isn't clear on on these elevations. The next set of elevations are from the north, which is the side that faces towards the San Marcos Motel. And the east elevation is the side that is the rear property, rear of the property and it faces towards the Avenue Heights Apartments. So again, when we're talking about the building height setback, this building right here, which is actually the building number one, the north side of building number one, it is on the property line. And this is where we have some questions about the setbacks and how they're being shown above the 30 foot level. These are site sections just to help interpret a little bit how some of the floors interrelate and how the how the garages interrelate with the courtyard in building number two. And moving to building number one, how, you know, the first floor on building one, which is the commercial space is actually the equivalent of two of these first stories in building two. It's just the function of how commercial spaces are built. But this shows the pedestrian bridges intended here, as well as here in building number two. It also shows the relationship between the project site and the adjacent Avenue Heights apartment buildings to the east. And there was, there were comments made as part of the prior reviews about how this would impact the view shed of the residents in these buildings. So this is, this shows the relationships. These are just some additional cross sections and if there's any questions, we can come back to these later. While these are there, proposed colors and materials. So again, following the Art Deco styling with awnings and the color scheme. It shows the location of some of the exterior light fixtures. They're addressed a little bit more in detail on the lighting plan. The ceramic tile decorative elements that are being proposed at certain locations. And generally a very cohesive color scheme being proposed here. And this is the rendering that shows the street context in comparison of the two buildings side by side. This is the proposed project that we're looking at right now, the 518 project. And this is the 480 Creekside Village project. And it shows how these two projects could potentially be viewed from the street. Actually, both of these show the similar views, but just different architectural styles being shown here. And you can see these are the medians long avenue flags. So setbacks and adjacencies. The Avenue Flags specific plan does really not specify setbacks and encourages zero lot lines with some exceptions. So the project proposes zero foot setbacks along three lines, three property lines. And the two street frontages, so Avenue Flags and Second Street. And also zero foot setback on the interior side, which is the north side next to San Marcos Motel. There is a 49 foot setback at the rear adjacent to the Avenue Heights Apartments. So this is a 49 foot setback to the actual buildings. The parking structures are closer to the property line. And that's typical for for parking, parking areas. So as I mentioned before, the Avenue Flags specific plan requires a building height setback at the property line. So any portion of a building that is greater than 30 feet in height shall be setback 10 feet. And this most, most clearly impacts the height at the northern property line, which appears to be 41 feet with no setbacks. Again, we need to clarify that. And we do need to clarify the setbacks also at the street frontages. It looks like there are setbacks being proposed. We just need to clarify what those are and how to how that appears from the street view. And as I mentioned, there's our zero foot setbacks from the property line. But please keep in mind that in addition to the property line, there's 12 foot sidewalks along Avenue Flags. And we've similar sidewalk or public right of way area along Second Street. So this building actually is at those locations is actually setback, you know, close to 12 feet from the sidewalk, the curb in the street, I should say. So these exceptions may require DOR or development plan modifications if as appropriate. And there are also building and potential fire department comments that may impact the building footprint and site layout. And I'm only bringing this up because there was a was a question from the applicant as to at what level the building department comments need to be addressed. Because some of them appear to be construction level comments. And we are pointing out and would like the applicant to take into consideration that some of the items that the building department is asking or may impact structures and the building footprint and the site layout. And those items that may impact would be the locations and the type of construction that is being proposed along the property lines, openings on the exterior walls, access and path of travel. So the residential density of this project is the baseline density that's allowed for the CR zone is 15 dwelling units an acre, which would allow for 18 residential units on the site. Exceptions to this, I'm sorry, this should say, exceptions to the density limit is potentially allowed via the Avenue Flags specific plan, which allows for a range of 20 to 40 dwelling units an acre via the DOR program. So the project is proposing a density of 39 units per acre, which equates to the 48 dwelling units. So they are, so this 39 unit density is within the range allowed in the Avenue Flags specific plan. And so this would afford them the 48 dwelling units that are being proposed. The city's affordable housing ordinance has a 15% inclusionary housing requirement, which means that they're required to build approximately eight affordable housing units on site. The required parking for this project is calculated at residential parking of 77 spaces and commercial parking of 19 spaces for a total of 96 spaces required. The project provides 100 spaces total on site. So they are parking, they are fully parked on site as required by the code. Bicycle racks are being provided. And a loading space is also shown on the site plans. I would just like to mention that this is via a striped area within the drive aisle that as shown, it obstructs vehicle spaces and which may be okay if they can restrict the loading hours to certain times and making sure that it's not the residential spaces that are being obstructed. And also, we need to clarify that there's adequate maneuvering space remaining in the drive aisles. Should large vehicles spark, vehicles park there for loading. The parking is being provided via combination of indoor garage parking, the tandem, meaning spaces for two cars back to back, not side by side, as well as some single space garages. And also outdoor parking. There's covered carports being proposed, which would potentially have solar panels installed on top and also uncovered outdoor parking. And I've pointed out the location of the outdoor parking already on the site plan. On the solar carports, we'll need to ensure that appropriate architectural design setbacks and screening are provided, especially from the adjacent commercial and residential uses, but primarily from the residential uses. And further review of the tandem parking is required. We just, so staff needs to go through zoning code. The zoning code does mention tandem parking is being allowed for certain types of uses. And it's mentioned in various places in the code. And we need to review the code to make an interpretation of how this would be applicable to the project. So we're looking at either, you know, addressing this via a plan modification, again, for parking or potentially as a DOR item. And we'll, we'll be looking at the site plan to determine if adequate vehicular access and maneuvering space is being provided to ensure safe vision clearances. And some of these items will be reviewed as part of the traffic study, which will look at onsite circulation and safety. The architectural design style is Art Deco for this specific plan. And you appreciate the architects being, you know, responsive and including the Art Deco design motif in their plans. On the actual, you know, mechanics of the building design, there will be some clarification and more details needed as to the relationship of the interior spaces to the exterior areas. How, how the common spaces will be accessed and access, access between the different floors. A roof plan will need to be provided. And the floor plan details will also need to address building and fire codes. And this was one of the comments that was made by the building department. So this will be, and again, typically, some of these may appear to be applicable to building constructions, construction documents. But some of these compliance items have in the past and could conceivably affect the site plan. So we're just bringing those up at this point because this is the point at which this needs to be addressed in the development plan review, rather than the building plans, which, you know, they could potentially lead to bigger issues at that point. Again, trash collection, two outdoor locations are provided. And these will need to be reviewed by Marborg, which is the city's refuse collection service. And we'll need to get a letter from Marborg saying that they've reviewed and the style and design and access are adequate for their purposes. And staff just has a question about whether any trash collection stations are provided on the residential floors. And basically, how would residents be taking their trash out for collection? Where those facilities would be located? A design review report was provided by the city's contract architect. The report came in after the agenda was distributed to the Planning Commission, but the report was addressed. I mean, it was distributed to the Planning Commission. And the comments will need to be addressed. I included, just I'm going to go through these really quickly because there's too many details here to read through, but basically, the comments pointed out the zero lot setbacks and the 30, you know, the building set, height setback above the 30 foot line. They also pointed out, you know, adequate areas for vehicle maneuvering, stacking, truck staging and loading and emergency vehicles that that be looked at. Parking areas should be separated from the buildings by pedestrian sidewalk and landscape strips. These just need to be further detailed in the plans. And comments on building facades of greater than 40 feet. Needing, having, being broken up into smaller units to meet, to promote more intimate pedestrian friendly scale. Let's see. Trash enclosures, they mentioned. Screening between the residential uses. Oh, and this is one that we'd like the applicant to address as well if there's any electrical vehicle parking being provided on the project. The building design, you know, generally complimentary on this, the overall massing is good. And appreciate the Art Deco design again. And just asking for details on some of the massing, clarifying the roof drainage, providing a roof plan detailing the parapets and roof detailing. And let's see. I think that's just some of the major, I'm just highlighting some of the major ones. Anyways, we can move on from here. So residential open space, the code requires 250 square feet of open space per unit. And they need, this open space needs to include usable amenities, such as outdoor seating, barbecues, child play areas, similar amenities. And it can also include private patio or balcony areas. So the 48 residential units would require 12,000 square feet of open space. And the project plans, the summary sheet indicates that 13,725 square feet are being proposed. However, the locations of these areas are not detailed in terms of the dimensions and what is being counted towards the residential open space. And I know that the private balconies are mentioned as they may be counted towards the open space, but those balcony areas are not dimensioned. And the locations of those, they really need to be enumerated so that we can ensure that adequate open space is being provided. So the landscape area that is required for this project is 15%, which may include up to 25% of hardscape. So 7,956 square feet would be required for the project. The project is proposing 6,758 square feet or 13%. And this is made up of 4,769 square feet, square feet of plantings and 1,989 square feet for hardscape. feet for hardscape. And it isn't clear in the plans, but it looks like they may be counting some of the off-site landscaping in the public sidewalk towards their landscape requirement, and this would need to be clarified. So, yeah. So overall, the landscaping is short by 1,198 square feet. And the project would either need to increase the landscape area or clarify really, you know, we need to work through what they're counting and what they're not counting. And this exception can be addressed via either a plan modification or a DOR item. And I would just like to mention here that in one of the render, I think it was a perspective or rendering in the landscape plan, it shows, you know, landscaping within the walkways and little vignettes about some proposed areas that'd be landscaped. And those can be counted, you know, plantings don't all have to be in the ground, they can be in planters and the arbors and trellises. So those could also be counted towards this landscape requirement. So they're, they may be able to come closer to this meeting, this square footage requirement. So the revised plans will need to show existing tree types with trunk dimensions over three feet. And this is typically shown on the site plan or a separate sheet so it doesn't clog up the landscape plans, but however best to depict that. And locations, dimensions and design details will be needed for landscape architectural features such as walls, fencing, gates, trellises, plantings, screening of parking areas in adjacent residential areas will need to be shown. And again, clarification of the landscaping in the public right-of-way is being counted towards many of the onsite landscaping requirement. Now I'll just go through the landscape site plans real quickly and we can come back to these if there's any questions. This is the landscape plan, main floor, I mean, yeah, which is the ground floor, the site landscaping. Second floor landscape plan. This does show some of the under, underneath the site landscaping as well, but it does show landscaping on the, on the second floor and similar with the third floor. Okay, so access and circulation. So the ground floor pedestrian access to the, to building one is from the Avenue Flags and Second Street. Building number one residential uses are accessed via an exterior staircase and also from building two via the connecting pedestrian bridges. Building two, the residential uses are accessed via an entry lobby, the main entry lobby off of Second Street. This has an elevator and interior stairs. And there's a second lobby that's accessed from the courtyard further back. This has interior stairs. Again, pedestrian bridges connect buildings one and two at all residential levels. And one of the things that is not clear on, on the site plans nor the architectural plans, and this is a, was a comment from city staff as well as the building department, is that accessibility and the path of travel through the entire site, both interior and exterior to the public right-of-way, it needs to be defined and it may affect the building layouts. And I would add to that that access from the parking garages as well needs to be clarified. As it's currently shown, it appears that the residents would need to exit the parking garages and walk around to enter their units through the stairs or the lobby, which has the elevator. So it's not clear as to whether there's any interior circulation proposed on the ground floor to enable access from the parking garages or if the exterior parking, the surface parking can somehow enter it through the buildings other than at the north end. And we can look at the site plan again if there's any questions, more questions about that. So the maximum aggregate sign area for the project is 365 square feet. So this is based on two street frontages, Avenue Flags being the short end, short side, and Second Street being the longer side, so one square feet, one, one square feet for lineal foot of frontage along Second Street is allowed and a half a square feet of sign area per lineal foot along the Avenue Flags is allowed. So that's how we arrived at the 365 square feet. The proposed plans, they do show the approximate locations for some of the signs, but we need more detail on this in order to be able to calculate compliance with this maximum aggregate sign area. So revised plans will need to show conceptual design, locations and, and dimensions of all the exterior signage and also description of sign lighting. And the signage needs to be consistent with the Art Deco design style. A separate sign permit will be required as part of the building plans prior to zoning clearance for the signage once, once all the tenants are known. So the sign permit application shall include a master, master sign program, and that's defined in our municipal code. And it also would need to address site lighting that may be proposed. A preliminary lighting plan has been submitted. It shows the location of exterior light fixtures and the designs seem, seem to be generally consistent with the Art Deco. But further details are needed with regards to dark sky compliance and the Kelvin rating, you know, light shielding to ensure that there's no trespass onto the adjacent properties. And I'd like to point out that within 50 feet of any residential uses, the lighting shall be installed no higher than 20 feet and shall not directly illuminate any residential units. So this would apply to the units within the proposed project as well as any adjacent residential units. Again, Avenue Heights is to the east and residential units are also, would be constructed within the Creekside Village immediately to the south. A photometric plan will be required, show the brightness at the property line so we can calculate what the brightness is and we have certain code requirements that limit what that will be. Typically, this is submitted as part of the development plan, but in some instances, we've allowed this to be included in their building plans that the, the project would be conditioned if they did not submit this as part of their revised plans. I would like to add that some detailed comments were received from the Women's Environmental Watch with regards to lighting, and they were very detailed and very, very specific. Then we will provide these comments to the applicant and review them to see how some of those can be incorporated into the project design, but they're generally consistent with what the city requires so that there's nothing new, there's just very, very specific and detailed comments. As far as the engineering plans and reports go, the Public Works Department has reviewed the plans and has found them to be generally satisfactory and most of the items can be conditioned for inclusion as part of the building plan set. But some of the items that do need to be addressed as part of the development plan, I mentioned this before, would be the onsite and offsite circulation, and this would be addressed in the traffic study. And the accessibility plan, path of travel, which is being required by the Building and Safety Department, and really the access and just the compliance with the city codes in terms of the parking layout, maneuverability of the vehicles in the parking areas, it all needs to be per the city's code. All right, the building and safety comments were received via email on the 18th, and they were provided to the planning commission as well as the applicant. And I'm just going to summarize the main issues that they are addressing as the, that need to be addressed, is a site accessibility plan with paths detailing accessible, accessibility to and from the, the right-of-way for each story, including the common spaces. And they made a comment about whether or not Building One Dwelling Units need to be served by an accessible route and if an elevator shall be, would be needed in order to accomplish The revised plans need to provide the type of construction being proposed as well as a code analysis, especially in regards to the allowable areas of openings for walls and fire separation distance between buildings. Similar comment here, openings for emergency egress and light ventilation, these shall be onto the yards or courts and just the locations need to be verified for compliance. And interesting comment on the elevator in the main lobby, it shall not, not open directly onto the stairway, so that's just something to note. And floor plan, okay, this was out in the floor plans on Building One, that on the property line, openings shall not be permitted. So we just need to verify, again, this is a note from the planning department, the elevations don't show any openings on the building facade at that location, but the floor plans appear to show openings, so we need to clarify whether, you know, this is being proposed or not. That needs to be addressed at the development line level. We have not yet received comments from the plan, the fire department. But in our, in our experience, the life safety issues that are typically addressed by them at this stage, which could potentially affect site and building layout, would involve emergency ingress and egress, access for firefighting apparatus, both ground level and aerial, building separation and fire rating for the types of construction being proposed. And I would encourage the applicant and the architect to contact the fire department and the building department to discuss some of these items before the revised plans are As far as the environmental review goes, the project could be considered categorically exempt from CEQA for a Class 32 infill development exemption. And the criteria for that exemption is for a project to be on a site of less than five acres surrounded by urban uses with no habitat value, and that is something that the site meets. The project is to be consistent with applicable specific plans, the general plan and zoning designations, which overall, this project, you know, would be able to potentially meet that. And number three, would not result in significant traffic noise, air quality or water quality impacts. So criteria three is where, you know, these impacts were discussed under the Avenue Flags mitigated negative declaration, but traffic is one of the items that could be potentially above those that were considered in the Avenue Flags MND. So traffic study will be required and they will need to address not only the vehicle impacts, traffic impacts, but they would also need to address on and offsite circulation and safety issues is, as part of the study. Okay, I'm getting to the end of my, my presentation here. So I'm just going to ask staff at this point if there's any additional comments to be added. I know we've got Andrea, the planning director, at the meeting as well as Rose, our Public Works Director, so if there's any additional comments, you know, we can hear from them. But in general, at the, after this, here, if the meeting is concluded, comments and corrections from staff as well as the planning commission will be summarized in an incomplete letter and provided to the applicant. Negotiations of the DOR terms and conditions will be taking place concurrently following this meeting. So there will be meetings taking place with an ad hoc committee of city council to be convened at one of the forthcoming meetings of city council. This is a similar process that was utilized for the Creekside Village where this ad hoc committee met with the applicant and hammered out the, the terms, including the financial terms of the DOR items that are being requested, so the incentives that are being requested by developer as well as the public benefits that are being proposed. So once these terms are negotiated, hammered out, these would be incorporated into the development agreement, which would be considered by city council after the planning commission concludes the public hearings on the project and makes its recommendations to city council. So with that, I am concluding my presentation. Again, available for any questions, we can go back to any of these site plans sheets and take a look if there's any questions or clarifications. Staff is here to answer other questions, planning and public works staff. The applicant is also present on, at the meeting via Zoom, is, is available to make a presentation and to answer questions. So with that, I turn it back to Chair Hammel. I'm going to leave my screen up in case there's any questions, if you would like to go back to any of these slides.
I'm not hearing.
Irma, can you hear me?
Now I can, I could not hear you until now.
Okay, well.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear Patty?
I can now hear everybody, I did not hear anybody until you, it sounded like you may have turned something on.
I think it's because I had myself muted on the Zoom.
Got it, that's probably.
Maybe muted everyone.
Okay, so at the point where I said Chair Hammel, that's the point where there was radio silence.
Anyway, thank you Irma for a very detailed analysis and presentation. We'll, I'll quickly turn it over for some quick questions for Irma, Commissioner Mercado.
Right now, I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Liggett.
Yes, I have two questions, just like clarification on, did you say in terms of the landscaping requirements that the landscaping in the sidewalks along the street do count or do not count towards that 15%?
They would not count towards their onsite landscaping requirement.
Okay.
So, yeah, that would be something that, you know, they're welcome to do that in the sidewalk, they would need to maintain the landscaping in the sidewalk, the public right-of-way, but as, as it's proposed right now, it doesn't, would not count.
Okay, and my second question, thank you. My second question is, in terms of the building setback, that's, that's not from the back of curb, is it? Is it from the property line?
It's the property line setback.
Okay. Okay, which is, okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, Commissioner Sarkia.
Excuse me. On the clarification on, because it's, it's on a flood zone, the foundation or the floor of the bottom building, how much raised will it be from the sidewalk of Avenue of the Flags?
So this building is.
So this building is not, the way the building is being designed would not be raised. It would be at ground level. So there's two methods to ensure compliance with the floodplain ordinance. One is to raise the building out of the floodplain. And but the other is to flood proof buildings via the type of construction they're using. And this, this is the avenue that they're proposing to use.
Oh, floodproofing then? Okay. And that's all the questions I had.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Blochdike.
I don't have any further questions.
Okay. And Irma, you covered my questions. I just wanted to quickly, I had tried to interject in there. But the review reports that have been submitted from the review architect and the building and safety, those have been passed along to the applicant, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. And then I wanted you to further give us a little, how the process works on the DORs, and you did that at the end of the presentation. So I have nothing further. Do we want to, does the applicant have a further presentation for us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Brandon Mann, the applicant. I apologize for not being able to be there in person. I really wanted to, but Zoom works out well too. So thank you, Planning Commission and Irma for going through that very thorough review of the project. I know this is the second time we've been in front of the Planning Commission. The first was the conceptual review. And since then, we've tried to address as many comments as we can and continue working on the project. But I think as Irma mentioned as well, there's a, once we submit, we are going to be looking forward to the planning comments, building and safety, fire, and the incomplete letter, and then doing our best to address all of these comments for the resubmital and then the subsequent public hearings for, for approval. So I don't so much have a presentation tonight. As much as I'm available to answer questions, I think Irma did a very thorough review. We're very excited and we hope that this project, you know, captures the essence of what the specific plan is looking for and, you know, is going to be a good benefit on the avenue. What I can do is I can also, if I could share a screen, I think in the package you have them, but just on the screen to show some additional renderings of the project and views that weren't showed in Irma's Irma's presentation. And then if this, if Planning Commission has any questions, I also have our architect here, David Gibbs, and my business partner, Waleed. Let me see if I can share my screen. Does everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. So this is the rendering of both projects. I think Planning Commission and City Council had asked in the past if they could see both projects together and what it would look like looking down Second Street. So we think it looks very, very cool and both projects, you know, kind of mirror each other. We think they're sister projects. And then as we go down, let me see, there's another rendering that RM did of what that corner is going to look like. Some perspectives of what the different accents of the building may look like. This is a top-down view of the corner courtyard area in the roof deck on Second Street. So this would be Second Street and Avenue of Flags. Another rendering of what it would look like in the common area roof deck for the residents. So these would be, you know, much liked amenities and gathering areas similar to 480 or Creekside Village, the sister project. Here's another view looking down, I believe from Second Street, the tall part would be the elevator, looking down on the project. And then RM did a really good job of flying a drone out to take some drone shots of the area and then superimposing the project as it would look like today with the existing infrastructure. They have Avenue Heights in the back, proposed Creekside Village, and what this project would look like, the 518. I believe I can stop sharing there. I can keep it on, but we're very excited. And I think, oh, the only other question I was going to answer was one of the commissioners asked about the, the flood zone. So we are doing floodproofing and same with Creekside Village. So the site does not need to be raised. And one of the most important aspects of that decision is that we felt for the main street or downtown, if people are going to be walking and shopping on Avenue Flags, we don't want the site to be raised with ramps. We want people to freely be able to enter and exit the retail and commercial and walk around the site freely. I also believe that SB County is doing a review of the flood zone as well. So in the next 12 months or so, I know they take a while, these projects may actually be out of the flood zone or the finished floor area or the required floodproofing may be reduced because I believe the old flood map doesn't include the new, the Avenue Heights projects or any other improvements on Avenue Flags that may affect that flood zone. So we are going to be waiting and seeing what that may do for the projects, but they work now in the flood zone. So I'm available to answer any questions anybody may have. And we have David here as well from the architect.
Thank you, Brandon. Okay, we'll go back through questions. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes, thank you, Brandon. I think it was a great presentation. You, I know we've talked about access for bicycles and stuff like that. So are you planning on having any bike storage for the residents? And another question I had on that is where your tandem parking and it always still has to be reviewed. Are you planning on having some documentation for whoever's using those tandem parkings that they are used for parking and not storage? Because there's not much storage for any of the residents there outside of the project, you know, they don't have any garages. So this is their garage. So if you're a normal person, you will have a lot of things to store. So that was a question I had and some of the other things will be addressed, like I said, once you get your, your final renderings. But those two are kind of just kind of like to get an answer on.
Yeah, good question. As far as the bike parking, I don't believe we have a designated bicycle parking spot on the site right now, but I definitely think that David and I can look at implementing one. I know that Creekside Village was also looking at having bicycle parking, and I do think that bike parking is going to be important. I think people will want to, you know, be more pedestrian friendly on the avenue. So that's something we can look into. And then as far as the tandem parking, we're already looking into the CCNRs or what we could potentially do. They are pretty healthy parking spots, but we want to make sure they're used for parking.
Right, right. And I think they work really good. Like I said, when my daughter was school and nurses in LA, her apartment building was that and it worked out great and very efficient. And I think that'll be good. Some of the other comments, I just, hopefully you're not going to use the balconies as county toward open space. So I think that's those who are lucky to get that, that should be theirs. And I, I think if you have a way to find that extra open space, we could do that. But overall, I think this has been an outstanding job. The other thing that, you know, I'm big on is just increasing the landscaping. I, I think that's especially important, like we talked about in the other project, is that that's, this is going to be our cornerstone. And here in California, whether we're in a dry condition or not, pretty is, it's pretty does. So I think it'll be important to maintain that landscaping and have it put to use.
Yeah, thank you for the comments. We are going to be addressing the landscaping, trying to see if we can make up the deficit or, you know, look at exactly what we're counting and improve upon it for the resubmital. But at the end of the day, we'll have landscaping features that I think will really highlight the projects and also the amenity spaces on top of the second and third floors for both 518 and Creekside Village. The hardscape will also be an important feature for the projects as well.
No, I think those are really great because if you go down to Staples Center, three of the four big hotels down there have cabanas up on top on the roof. And so you can have cocktails before a game, you can do things, and it's, it's fun. I mean, I, I think those part of your projects are just for the homeowners or for your occupants there, it'll be great because there's, there'll be things happening on, hopefully on Avenue of the Flags and just being able to have that access to those should be a feature. So I think you should be committed on that. I think it'd be a great space.
Yeah, I'm waiting for the, the city to start breaking ground. I believe that's median three, right in front for the amphitheater, right? So looking forward to that.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Liggett.
Yes, hi. Just reiterating what Commissioner Mercado said about landscaping. Aside from, from being beautiful, it does have health and ecological benefits. So I do hope you don't try to request a DOR or plan modification, that you do indeed get that 15%. Because I, I think we, it's a community really value the landscaping. So I wanted to echo that. And then just, I think this is very thorough, beautiful renders, really helps us envision the design. One design feature that I just have question and are these large blue swaths on the walls? Are those ceramic tiles? Like in the north elevation, you see that huge semi-circle connected to a rectangle, kind of arch shape along the face of the building. ceramic tile.
I think, I think he's referring to the elevator structure.
The north elevation on the right.
I didn't, I can answer that one for us. Yeah, I know, we have an art deco building with a lot of beautiful details that are in plaster. So a lot of times with that plaster, you want to bring in an accent punch. And so we thought the elevator and a few other spots was a really good spot to put kind of some crowning tiles that will be adorable material that will go along with the plaster, but also bring that pop of color. Scott, Martin is also here.
I was just, David, that was a great, great point. And I was just going to clarify for everybody. It's, it accentuates the elevator along Second Street, and it also accentuates what would otherwise be a blank wall. Irma brought it up, I think, the northern side that's built on the zero property line. You know, the neighbor, should they ever develop, could build right on the zero property line as well. But until that point, we still want a beautiful face of architecture. So from a fire standpoint, we can't have openings. Irma, I think there's a mistake in a plan or two that you guys, your eagle eye caught. But for us, it's really about creating a great public presence and, and a bit of a, a bit of a jewel piece. So yeah, it's an accent material to, to help break up the architecture, which I think is cohesive and in keeping with the rest of the deco theme.
Thank you. I agree. I think it has potential to be beautiful. I just, it wasn't spelled out on the plans. Just wanted to make sure it wasn't a window. I agree. I think that would be a very nice design feature. That was really my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarkia.
Thank you for the clarification on the flood zoning. And I too really like your renderings. It gives us a much better idea of what's going to go on there. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Blochdike.
Thank you. Well, I, I would just be echoing what Commissioner Liggett, Commissioner Mercado already said about the landscaping. However, I would like to say the landscaping, I looked at the plan, really liked it, liked the plan choices, thought it was all going to work out really well. So it would be great if we could get a little bit more, maybe, and I think I heard the roof area is a really great place to maybe expand on that. Anyway, that's about it. My compliments. I think it looks wonderful.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I am echoing the same. I wanted to thank the architect and the applicant for those, the detailed plan elevations that show the two properties together. I think I was one of the ones who requested that, that look, and the presentation is great on that. I also appreciate the cross-sections that were provided because some of that, the interior courtyards and ingress egress and stuff is kind of hard to figure out from just looking at plans. Oh, and the bird's eye views were cool too, where the, somebody did the drone and then superimposed the plans, the renderings on those. Those are awesome. I just have one comment because, you know, we can't get away from me talking about art deco. And the one thing I wanted to kind of look at is on the renderings for the, the west side that faces the avenue. There's, on the retail portion, there's the very round circular archways, windows. And I think that has the tendency, and it could just be the, what we're looking at today, that has the tendency for me, it kind of reads a little bit Spanish Moorish. And so I'm wondering if we can do some kind of a step back or graduation. What else would be my word? I think you know what I'm saying, to get some, a little step back. So they're almost like there's a 3D kind of looking into that window archway.
Perhaps like a crown added to it that comes out. Is that what you're, is that what you're kind of referring to?
Sure, sure. Yeah, I mean, it, it just reads very simple and, and not art deco-like, you know, doesn't have the detail that, you know, that you have the detail everywhere, everywhere else. So I'm just thinking, you know, since that's the, the elevation that faces the avenue, if we can maybe make a little more detail on that. And that's, that's all I had. I'm going to bring Andrea. Do you have any additional anything or are we ready for my summary?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Commissioner Hamel. I just did want to mention really briefly, excuse me, that per the new procedures with AB 361, we will need to give members of the public who may be watching the meeting via City TV, the opportunity to comment on this item. And so before we move forward any further, I think now would be a good time to give the public the one minute opportunity to call in on the number on the screen, if that's okay with you.
Yeah. So then I encourage again, if, if the public is watching via City TV, if you have any comments for the project or questions, call the number on the screen, 1-669-900-6833. There's the meeting ID and the passcode, and we'll give you a minute to check in with us. Yes. So if you look at 480, they do a much more detail.
I like it, but because you see that you have a full landscaping with the trees there, kind of break them up.
Yeah, yeah.
More landscaping in front of you. You look at the bottom with the, with the trees or break it up.
Yeah. Here, there's more graduated. It's a slot. Okay, I think that's enough time for the public. Anything else, Planning Director Kiefer?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. So overall, great job to the applicant and all the parties involved, a nice rendition. Again, thank you to Irma for her detailed analysis and presentation. So I think we're all in agreement to move forward. The next thing, the planning department will be issuing the incomplete letter. And then, of course, you can move forward with that and take into account all of the separate reviews that have come in, and that would be the, the architect review, building and safety, and then we're waiting to hear from fire and maybe another party. But we look forward to moving forward with you and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move along. Written communications, anything? No? Planning Commissioner comments, anyone?
No, good.
Okay, I'll just add a couple of quick things. Shout outs to the Chamber Shout outs to the Chamber of Commerce is back in the mixing business. They held a, their meeting, their mixer last night at Breland Ford. They're having another one in November and one in December. And then just a couple of quick things coming up on the calendar for the city. The Boulton Bazaar is November 6th at Riverview Park. That's our local artisans and crafts people. The word is to go there and get all your Christmas gifts because all your other Christmas gifts are in the LA Harbor on ships. Not being, not being unloaded. Let's see, November 13th is going to be another community shred day for you to bring your banker's boxes of all your old paperwork in. And then I'm, I'm not clear on this. I believe it's called the Fall Fest or Fall Festival, which will be on the Avenue of Flags, I believe on median two, the new parking lot. That is all weekend, November 12th, 13th and 14th. And so those are all my calendar items. Planning Director reports, Andrea.
Yeah, thanks Commissioner or Chair Hamel. I just, just one clarification. Yeah, the Fall Fest will be located on the avenue, primarily on median three. And as well as the, potentially the private property, actually the 518 project site as well. So so that's the location. But yes, November 12th through 14th is, is the planned date for that. Other than that, I don't have much else to add. I think I better save my voice before I, I lose it here. So I appreciate it very much.
Okay, thank you very much. And we will adjourn at 7:23.